Yeah.
Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right, need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I approve the agenda if there's no modifications for Thursday, September 3, 2020.
Second.
Motion been made, second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Any questions on the purchase orders?
Build a pit stop. Is that additional mold remediation or is that?
We had several areas down at 750 Old Moore Street that we wanted cleaned up, so we actually tracked quotes, and they were a little bit quoted, and they actually went into the modeling. We had their own examples taken, but you have to do it inside down there now. It was, it just smelled a little musky and bumpy, and it was that, as you walk in the front door of that office area in the original section, that's all been done now. It looks very, very nice.
But I think what Jim's saying, it was remediated once before from another company, from out of state.
Different section.
Right.
Yeah, that was the diocese that was taken out of the old area.
All right, and no internal budget revisions. Change in status, we do have a few of them. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable John Small, County Clerk for Lisa K. Williams as a deputy clerk with an annual salary of $30,002.18 effective September 7, 2020. New hire recommendation also received from Allen Davis, County Administrator for Jennifer Swisher as a 911 Director with an annual salary of $70,000 effective September 28, 2020.
Does Abby should start?
Yes, sir.
When are you required?
I'm in December.
So I have two months for one's period.
She does, but Mary has also indicated that she has planned for the vacation that she would like to take the last two months, but it does give us some, she's not leaving the area.
We have a change in status received from Mary Cackling, 911 Director for Olivia Leggett. She will be going from a full-time to part-time telecommunicator. Her salary will go from $34,900 annually to $19.53 per hour effective August 24, 2020. That's the, all the changes status, so that puts us down another full-time operator.
Yes.
We have approval of the minutes. I was not present for August 20, 2020. You all would like to make a motion on those?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the August 20, 2020, Burfley County Council meeting minutes.
Have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Moving on to county council calendars, we have, we'll be off Monday for Labor Day, on the 7th. We'll be in the chambers next week on the 10th. Board of Commissions will be, the planning commission will be on Tuesday evening at 6:00 PM on the 8th, on Wednesday at the 9th at 9:30 AM. Development Authority, 1:00 PM Historical Landmarks, at 6:00 PM Roundhouse Authority. Thursday, on the 10th, a fire board will meet here in the chambers at 6:30 PM. Any changes on the boards and commissions? We have a letter of endorsement from the Northeast, sorry. We have a letter of endorsement, Eastern Pan Home Builders Association. Anybody have any questions on that? And moving on to a bond release for grading, Middle Creek View Estates LLC, Middle Creek Manor, Phase 3, Engineering Department hasn't made that recommendation. Any questions on that? The motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Your motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Ms. Edgar, I guess you're here in the presence of Mr. Hess.
In the absence of?
Absence of Mr. Hess, correct? Thank you.
Mr. Hess is attending the hearing, participating in the hearing with Anthony right now.
Okay. All right, so it looks like you have three personal property tax exoneration due to reason of taxpayer error.
Correct. Do you want me to give you the names or?
Yes, please.
Okay. The first one was Keith and Barbara Perkins, Stuart and Lisa Gore, and Christopher Householder.
Okay, approved.
Basically, the first two had not removed vehicles from their form, and the last was he admitted that line, but he still filed an online form with our office.
All right, the total being $419.97?
Correct.
All right.
Mr. President, I'll move to accept the three taxpayer exoneration, recent taxpayer error.
$419.97.
Have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. All the ones that say nay.
Nay.
Let the record show that the motion failed. You also have eight personal property tax exemptions for a reason of office error.
Correct. You want me to list those also as well?
Please.
The first one was for Sergio Ockler. There was a mix-up with his name, and so there were errors made. Jennifer McDaniel, her Chrysler was supposed to be removed, but it was keyed in error. Hilton Landscaping, there was two bills generated in error under different account numbers. Marcia Stippler, the taxpayer was incorrectly charged the $25 late penalty. Trubert Taylor, the bill was made in error for incorrect vehicles. And then you have three for Natalia Doppa Nova, and due to a name mix-up, the bill had been created in error, I guess, for the three years.
Okay.
The total for that is $1,976.41.
Entertaining a motion on the personal property tax exoneration due to office error.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the personal property tax exonerations due to officer in the amount of $1,976.41.
Second.
Motion been made, second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. And you have one real estate tax exoneration due to officer.
I would consider.
What was that?
I talked to a young lady. The thing was with her was she had the lease somewhere else, and she had a house that had been rented that she owned. She moved back to her house that she owns. She put on her personal property return that it, that she had moved to that location, it just didn't get transferred from the personal property section to the real estate section, therefore the house was left in class three. Larry did approve the suggestion for exoneration to change to class two for the 2020 tax year to do the exoneration.
All right. We have one real estate tax exoneration due to officer. Entertaining a motion.
Second.
All right, and that motion is for $985.79. For, did you mention her name? Travis, Amy Travis?
Travis.
All right. Do we get a second on that?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. We have four applications for consolidation of property.
Yes. The first one is for MacMillan Court Rentals LLC. I don't know what other information you want from me. It is in Mill Creek, map six S-14 and six S-13. Taxpayer would like to receive one bill. The second one is Gillian McCarthy, did you from Jarrettstown, map 25, 23.15, and map 25, 23.16. Again, the taxpayer wanted to have one bill. Third one is for Erin Getrell. This is in Mill Creek. This is three parcels, map six, parcel 47, 48, 49. Again, we would like to receive one tax bill. And then the last one is for C.E. Properties in Hedgesville, map 21, parcel 164.2 and 164.1. They would like to receive one tax bill as well.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for the four applications for consolidation.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Looks like you have a final divorce.
Correct. So what happened was they were assessed together for the 2020 tax year, and they did a divorce. He gets the Ford F-250 and the Honda, Hyundai Elantra, and she's supposed to get the Hyundai Santa Fe. So his assessment, instead of the total assessment of 460.19 in taxes, his amount of tax due would be 310.75, and her amount of tax due would be 150.44.
Who accepts?
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Larry generally smiles when he comes up. See that? Now that, that's much nicer.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Board of Meeting, Mr. Barnhart?
Actually, I have nothing to report.
So you're deferring your time to Elaine?
I'm, I'm, I'm keeping the time.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Well, this week's been very interesting. There was a very nice article in the paper about farmland this week in the Herald. Thanks, Matt. Talking about over five thousand acres and the number of people and the fact that we have, what was the actual number that we've done? It was at nine that we've done, something like that, that we've done in very quick order as far as actual, uh, applications fulfilled. And of course, we still have a ton of folks that want to be involved. Somebody said, "It's hard to believe when you're in Worth County." These people want the property preserved, and it's,
Good for them.
It's great. Going on to the Roundhouse, there's been a number of things going on. The Amtrak, uh, the walkthrough is, uh, is today, like going on right now, going over the locks and everything. So different members, the volunteers are over there to make sure that all the locks and things on the gates, because the way the, uh, the new platform works is that you are using that, uh, the tower and, uh, because they do not want people crossing the tracks. So they've changed all the locks and everything. So the walkthrough today was on the locks. Tomorrow is the ribbon cutting with the Amtrak folks wanting to be here. Uh, working also with a grant coming up, which is due the ninth for letters of support. Uh, working on that. Uh, the, working with the construction people, uh, working to get the alarm and the phone system hooked up and the water meter with the city. Uh, and the bunch out, I'm not, I'm holding my breath. It's supposed to be Tuesday, the eighth. So.
That flush time?
That's flush time. So, not holding my breath, but that's supposed to be flush time.
Well, I'm glad that we can get this done before I leave council.
You want to come over and make a nation?
He's been voting it all the time.
We were talking about this. I was kind of anticipating, you know, when I first came into council and, uh, and I'm still, I'm still waiting for that moment.
Well, and part of it.
Well, you do, well, Ms. Moch, I have to do the first flush.
It's getting, it's getting harder as I get older, too, you know. I am six years old.
What's amazing is the grant, the original grant was two thousand and six, and all the other things going on, when everything has started, it's over twenty-one years that, that things have been going on, and we've had no restrooms. And the grant was two thousand and six, so it's over fifteen years even getting to the, getting, getting the twenty percent and getting the thing actually going forward. So, uh, a lot of things, uh, are happening, and, uh, I sent a request to the Department of Highways, uh, regarding the twenty percent, because originally, they, they stated we could, we're eligible because of being in the low-income area with the opportunity zones. So, I don't know what's going on. They, they said the opportunity zones and stuff doesn't count right now, and I, my letter stated that due to the pandemic and everything else going on, and nobody having any opportunity to make and earn money. We're hoping that, uh, they will see it, because if, if we get the next round of, of grants, it'll make us self-sufficient twelve, uh, twelve months out of the year, which right now, we're running on six months, and just grants and festivals would be able to give us a bankless thing, because the bridge, the downstairs, you can see three fifty to four hundred. And, uh,
Are they going to allow the in-kind contributions to that twenty percent, or is that what's up in the air?
That's what's up in the air, and I have all the in-kind's listed. It's way over a couple hundred thousand of in-kind's, over, uh, five thousand hours of volunteers. There's over, uh, four, five hundred, uh, community service hours. I've got it all in there. It's a four-page epistle. So, uh, I've given it a shot. So, as we say, I'm throwing a shot over the bow. So, thank you very much, but that's, that's been my week.
Charles, where's the delegate?
Um, I didn't have any, uh, meetings. We did do a, uh, bid opening yesterday out at the airport for, uh, some construction, uh, work to be done. Um, I believe we'll, we had a couple of questions on one of them, so I believe we'll probably be, uh, in two weeks at the airport authority awarding that bid to one of the, uh, one of the two that turned in bids to get the renovations done, so we can, uh, uh, move Arimad over, uh, into the other facility and, and get that building so that we can start doing something with the large hangar.
Cool.
But everything out there is really, really, uh, those guys out there, um, and I'm sure you already know, they're doing magnificent job. They, they're a good, good team of guys out there. Um, the new employees that have transferred over, um, to the airport. The guys are just, can't say enough, doing a great job out there.
Well, you, um, speaking on that behalf, I have to say that, uh, more time that I spend around Nick Deal, um, which I had opportunity to spend five hours with him last week, very, very impressive. Uh, just, just, uh, well-connected, um, always stays focused on the, on the mission, and, uh, sat on some boards with him, and just outstanding individual.
He's, he's a big asset to our community, uh, you know, his, his position out there at the airport and as well as his, uh, um, being the Chair at the, uh, Transit Authority. Huge, huge asset to our, our community here, without doubt.
I think I want his time to settle down, but I do have a meeting with him coming up in regards to the anniversary of the airport.
Good. Mr. Whittaker?
No meetings yet, uh, but I will have a, uh, planning commission meeting on Tuesday of next week after Labor Day.
I had an AMBLANCE Authority meeting last Thursday. Um, one of the things they're, they're looking at is, um, some building renovations on the south end building down there. That was, um,
A little one?
Yeah, yeah. So, that, that was spoken about. They, they have, uh, we're going to be trying to do some drawing on that. Johnny Taylor's one that chairs that committee. Talking about the, they approved some, um, new equipment. Some of our stuff is getting outdated on, on the fibers and things of that nature, uh, the radios for the officers.
The fibers, they, they're like, well, I should say their technologies, it's less than ten years.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, they come up with something new, and, you know, I think we went through two, the year that I was on at first, we went through two different cycles of fibers as well as, uh, leads that transmit data to.
Yeah, there, there was about seven items on the agenda that they have decided to, to, uh, they prioritized them, but the board approved them all, over a hundred thousand dollars worth of spending. But, just like everything else that the AMBLANCE Authority Board and staff has done over the past several years, they, they just came a long ways, and it's, and it's all about making sure we serve the people the best we can.
Yeah. Is that building down there going to fit their long-term use? I mean, if you're spending money on renovating again, I know that the, in the beginning, they had to spend money on just to move into it, but is it, is it, I, I mean, it just seems like an awful, awful small facility.
Well, one of the things that we, this council, um, was wanting to do by majority was, uh, when South Burfey was building new Fire Hall, actually, the Fire Board and I, and council was wanting to put them all in the same building. And unfortunately, the, that, the AMBLANCE Authority Board at the current time, and one of our county commissioners said no, so it never happened. Now that's not an option. So, um, I think then, from the, from the little, little sketch that they had provided for Thursday night at Will, it's basically going to make the bay bigger and taller. And then they don't have, they had their training room down there for years, which is now at the new station, so that opened up a lot of space. Uh, it's not a, I think it's, if I remember services correctly, the, the, the bay for the AMBLANCE would be a little bit bigger on a front addition and add twenty feet to the side. I have not had time to look at it firsthand. Um, I was not able to make that meeting that they set up. Unfortunately, they make them right in the heart of the day. So, I will get down there and take a look at it with Mr. Taylor, trying to make sure it goes in the right direction.
I know when that building was going to be first rehabbed to put the new station in from the old location, that the apparatuses that were going in and out of it were smaller up in town.
Right.
And now they've gotten bigger, and it's, it's created a little bit of an issue for restraints back in and out.
And that, well, and that's what, well, first of all, I think even after they did that, they didn't have enough room to actually get the stretcher out the back. And, and with the doors down, so, and then, um, and now, like you said, even today, the AMBLANCE are getting bigger and taller and everything like that because of the band-aid on them. And now the new ones can't get in that, that bay up there, so they have to use the older versions that we have. So soon or later, we're going to be forced to change it anyway.
Plus, there's, there's, there's a lot of already impervious areas, so there's not going to be much.
All impervious.
Yeah. As far as an, an issue with that, it's already been calculated, so.
Right.
Yeah, and my, my question would just, you know, when you add on and add on and modify and modify, at some point, you might look at the thing and say, you know what, we just need to create what we need to have for, that it's going to last us the next twenty years, and it'll be done.
That thought went across my mind, and Johnny threw out a number, and I just laughed at it. You know, it's, the people don't realize how much construction cost is these days because of the material.
Oh, and material. I mean, right now, it's crazy. I mean, it's crazy. OSB's twenty-one to twenty-four dollars a sheet. Six months ago, it was eight.
Right, right. So, people, people don't understand, so. It's not a, it's not a big rush, but I told the board back when they built the new building, I said, now, I'm telling you right now, be expecting as soon as they get in the new building, they're, they're going to need that building remodeled, because now it's the whole, the use of the building is different. And that's, didn't take long.
I know that quite frequently, when I walk in the living room, HGTV's on. You see some of the renovations that they do and the cost of them. I, I makes me wonder where it's at, and then you, you see what they do, and it's there.
I want to get to where he's at, where I see renovations on the TV.
Let me tell you, it's usually when I get home in the evenings, and she has it on.
Me, me, I gotta live that every day, Jim.
I just like the price they do for on TV.
Well, now, there was a, there was a water line that had to be upgraded. And it, you know, I'm sitting there thinking, okay, I'll pick the price. It was almost three times of what I felt, just putting in a new water line service.
Yeah, well, generally, when it, when it comes to remodel work, there's no way we can touch, touch it for what they said. But anyway, enough about construction, but, um, yeah, and then another, other topic was their, their call volume is, is,
Double.
picking up, and I asked for all those stats when, we always talk about, uh, uh, there is some issue about growth, and that was one of the biggest issues is public safety. So, I think they've done a really good job of getting the pay scale where they needed it to be. And now, they wanted us to keep it there where the same way we have. And then we also know that the, even the station on the north end is very, I mean, that was, I think, a foremost larger one in general with a new garage on it. And that's going to be one of our, that's one of our most populated areas right now down there.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe there should be, you know, uh, um, like you were talking earlier, some, some group that's going to look at how those things change in the future and have a better, long-term look at where the growth is going to be with residential and commercial, and how that's all going to fit into the need for the.
Sure.
Fire.
I think that was in a pretty good location. It's right there, I mean, it's,
Oh, it is a good location.
It is a good location.
You know, it's, I mean, actually, there's a little bit more growth right into Spring Mills than what there is, but really, the call volume is on the south end and the middle, or so the Spring Mills seemed. Like they called us down there.
Yeah, no, I, I think that, I think, and I don't run calls, so I can't say a hundred percent, but I would think the only place you're really lacking any service is probably, um, in the Woods Resort out in that area, isn't it? The, the far-reaching area, because there is a pretty good population in that one spot out there.
Yeah, you know, the woods, definitely, and plus, that's an Asian community out there, too.
Right.
Um, but, um, there's the other thing they're talking about, too, is adding another AMBLANCE Authority personnel in, so they have an EMT and a paramedic in Back Creek Valley. So, that's just tough, because right now, um, at that point, they can get the fire truck and the AMBLANCE out rather than one or, you know, right now, they can take whichever one comes first. So they're looking at that as well. So, and they know in the near future, they're probably going to have to add another twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five crew. Um, I know I was at the hospital this week, early this week, and the AMBLANCE were rolling. There was three of them at the back door of the, of the hospital, and there's two more coming down eighty-one. So there's five of, five AMBLANCE right there within four minutes.
Well, and I think when, when, uh, Brian brought back that study, that, that, that time I asked him a question about how vulnerable they were and what would happen, and he actually weighed out all those scenarios and said, "You know what? We got it right now." But, and that, that, that tells you right there that that needs to be looked at annually, that that, that needs to be addressed annually, because if you have a problem, the last thing you can do is have, have your teams go down and not be able to serve the public.
And plus, with the whole COVAD stuff, I mean, that, you have one or two crews go down. That's pretty.
Yeah, but we get that every four years, so in four years from now, we're going to have another one, something else.
Oh, yeah, but, but, right now, their overtime's up, um, uh, the payroll's up, but they're, you know, CARES Act is, is going to be more, enough to cover that, that, those additional expenses. Carla, which we all know, has been in the office for thirty years plus, probably, is retired. So, so they're making some shifts and hiring some people, and making sure that's, I think Carla's going to do some part-time work, filling for, for the AMBLANCE Authority. The AMBLANCE Authority, I think, are doing a wonderful job, and they really are.
They've come a long way.
They have, and the staff is very happy.
You know, and, and be honest with you, I've never heard, I've never heard complaints about the AMBLANCE Authority. I mean, I've heard complaints of, why do I got to pay this fee, or, you know, they charge too much or whatever when you do it, but a, as far as service, never heard a complaint about service.
My dear people, so. At this time, I don't have anything else I can report on, so, uh, moving on to any, um, board and commission vacancies, any activity there?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I'd like to, uh, appoint Sandy Hamilton to the.
Okay. Motion been made. Second, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Well, Mr. President, I see that Jennifer Smith has applied for the threat board. We don't have an opening, do we, Tracy? So I don't, uh, I'm going to put that on hold for a bit.
All right. Okay. Uh, Mary's not here yet. Huh? Okay. Yeah. Morning, Mrs. Cackley. How you doing?
I'm good, and I got you all.
Doing well. How come you're not wearing a hat?
I didn't buy one for myself, but this fall, it's down.
Think I had a communication with one of your telecommunicators this week.
Oh, you did?
On Monday, yeah, or Tuesday morning, I'm sure, or afternoon.
I mean, through nine-one-one?
Uh-huh.
Did you?
Yeah, yeah, good experience.
Good. That is big.
Yeah.
I had one last week with an on- emergency line.
Those arrest calls aren't fun. Those arrest calls aren't fun.
No, this was, this one actually went to animal control.
All right, Mrs. Cackley, you, uh, you have a team of, uh, recruits here to be recognized for communicate, telecommunications.
Yes, um, as you all know, COVID-19 has laid havoc with, uh, many things, uh, and the second full week of April is always dedicated, um, as National Telecommunicators Week, and we've always, um, had, uh, the, uh, the, uh, having a recognition, and we thought that it would be, um, no longer available this year since it's canceled. Um, but, um, I want to thank you all for not forgetting and for giving me a call, and thank you very much, um, and wanting to know if we wanted to do this again. And with this being my last year, uh, to be able to be a part of it, I'm really glad, uh, to do that. We have an outstanding staff in Berkeley County. They have, through the COVID-19, um, at one point, no leave was allowed. Now, we've loosened that, and we can give, uh, at least a minimum of three days, and hopefully soon, in the next several weeks, I can open it up fully. But, um, they have, uh, been dedicated, they have, uh, for the most part, um, not, uh, grumbled about too much. They grumble some, but not too much, and, uh, they have, um, been a great bunch of people to work with, and I know that when I leave, I'm leaving Berkeley County in outstanding hands. So if you would, um, allow that
For some reason, I just don't think you're going to be leaving. You'll be retiring.
I'll be leaving.
But I never think Ms. Cackley's going to be leaving. All right?
I'm going to have to do what I did at Charlotte Prater.
Uh, just walk away, huh?
I'm going to have to walk away, because if I don't, I'll be back dispatching, you'll, you'll have to retire as a telecommunicator.
So, so you would answer, you would say, hello, this is the telecommunicator retired number one?
Uh, yeah.
Almost certainly make you an emeritus.
You think?
Yeah.
Can, can you do that?
Sure.
Yeah, that's the nice way, uh, Mr. Woody Guro saying, I'm going to work for him.
Not what I meant.
I'm just formatting you. Um, is it okay if they all come forward?
Absolutely. Yeah, we're okay with that.
What up?
I know they're setting as a group, because they work as a group, so.
Yeah, we have some sleeping, uh, some should be sleeping, and, uh, some that are, uh, staffing the center.
Doesn't seem like it's already been a year since you've been here the last time.
I'm sorry.
Doesn't seem like it's been a year already, since you was here the last time.
And actually, it's been over a year. Okay, everybody up here. Um, first, um, you know, the longevity, uh, of a 911 telecommunicator nationwide, the average is eight years. Um, so, when we have people that, um,
Did they factor you into that calculation?
I'm sorry?
Did they factor your time of being here for 40-some years into that calculation?
In the average.
Because it probably dropped to about 12 years.
Yeah, um, I was, uh, either in love with what I did, or I was stupid.
You're not stupid.
But anyway, uh, uh, a couple of years ago, we started recognizing those that had some years in service. So there were two, um, this year, uh, and I want you all to understand, this is based on April, not today, okay? Your longevity should then calculate for next year, if you did that month after April. Um, but for five years of dedicated service, first of all, we have Kayla Orison, who is also one of our supervisors. We have, um, another five-year recipient, and I don't think that she's worth being so proud of, and that's Jordan Flowers, who's also a supervisor. And then, we have a 10-year
Uh, award.
And that goes to another supervisor, Carolyn Smith. Um, and then, um, our next awards, uh, we do based on, um, uh, the administration's evaluation of their dedication, their attendance, their willingness to go above and beyond. So, we have three categories, part-time, telecommunicator of the year, we have telecommunicator of the year, and then supervisor of the year. So, the part-time, uh, communicator of the year, and I don't see her here, goes to Kelsey Greenfield. This is a young woman who started out as a full-time telecommunicator, but went on to college and, uh, got, uh, her degree, and is now working full-time, but still provides hours, uh, to the 911 center on a regular basis, keeps all of her certifications and credentials up, uh, and maintained. So, um, you all go back, and when you see Kelsey, probably this weekend, um, you might want to, uh, tell her congratulations. For the telecommunicator of the year this year, uh, we have, um, a person who has, uh, again, gone above and beyond. Uh, we've had to have a lot of call-ins, uh, overtime extended, and, uh, this person generally never, uh, does not come in. Um, and, um, he has, um, excelled, and I just gave it away.
That's real sad, boy.
But, uh, and I know that I, I do know, uh, that, uh, you will probably say, Commissioner Cohen Haver, that he received, should receive the award just because, as you can see. He puts up with hearing all of us, all of our, uh, stories, all of our home lives and things like that, and he's still
That's a word within itself.
So this year's telecommunicator of the year goes to Ryan Schuler. And Ryan, I can't thank you enough for putting up with us, first and foremost, but thank you so much for the wonderful work that you do. He's very, uh, detailed-oriented, does what he's supposed to do, uh, and, um, really, uh, is an asset to our department.
If I'm not mistaken, Ryan, I think you're the one I was talking to on Monday.
Maybe, I think it was Phil.
Tuesday, Tuesday, okay, Phil. All right, so, yeah.
And then, uh, lastly, and not, uh, not, uh, without, um, saying, the next, um, person, um, is a person who also is dedicated, um, even though, uh, she has, um, some, um, issues, uh, of her own. She always is, uh, present, she very seldom calls out, uh, she does what, uh, is expected of a supervisor, uh, you know, discusses, uh, what they're doing right, but also what needs to be corrected in a very, very firm, but, uh, nice and accepting way. So this year, supervisor of the year goes to Kim Barrett. So now, I, that's the end of my awards, but I think that each one of the ones should be made to give a speech.
Be, yeah, just kind of get them seasoned in.
And so, you can start with the supervisor while she's
All right, Kim, let's go. I've known, you said she was little, so be comfortable.
Honestly, like, I really didn't expect this, because, I mean, we all have to work together, we're all, you know, we really do all work together, and I tr, I just try to do my best with making everything go the way it's supposed to go. I'm good at work, but
Yeah.
I mean, I thank them for all of them.
And Kim, a good leader, always, it, it's not about them, or it's not about us, it's always about the team, and it's the team that makes things happen, for sure. She even picks on you, that's crazy. I mean, you, you put up with all these women, and then she picks, she smacks you when you come up to the podium.
Uh, they have to put up with my stories, too, which I thank them for, I thank them for all their help with all the teamwork, everybody working together. I mean, none of us would be here if we all didn't work together.
It's a very tight-knit group, for sure, so, so, it's good, good for each, each and every one of you, and we certainly do appreciate everything you all do.
Hey, anybody else?
Well, one of the, one of the things that, you know, as you know, we very seldom have time or take the time, uh, to, uh, come down to Central Dispatch to visit, and you have to look at that as being a good thing. Normally, when we show up, there's trouble, um, but don't be alarmed if, if we do show up, um, so, and, and that's a compliment to each and every one of you, and Mary, and Paula, and, you know, for you all to be able to do what you do as well as you do it. And we also recognize and understand, as Mary stated today, with you all being in public safety, it's a, it's a huge demand on each and every one of you, from a personal standpoint, we're, we're continually trying to improve that, um, and, um, meaning, you know, when we first got started, we, years ago, we didn't have the room, and then we, so we built a new facilities and improved, and put additional, so we could have the room. Then it came to the point where we needed more telecommunicators, because now we had the room. Pay was an issue, um, you know, retention was an issue, so, we've came a long ways, but there's more, more that we can do. There's, there's more things that we have to do, and one of the things we have to do is be able to get you, ladies and gentlemen, um, the opportunity to be able to take your time off, and we have to work on that, and we will continue to try to do that. So, you know, one of the things that we always say, if you, if you find someone out there that would make a great team player, try to get them to come in, help with Mary or Paula, and see what we can do. If there's even some prior telecommunicators out there that seem like they would like to come back, because I understand there, there is. I actually talked to one of them not too long ago, and said, oh, I'd love to come back, right? So, that will help to be able to give you all some time off, I know Mary's been working on that, and trying to be able to get you all some additional time off. We know, we, we, just to let you all know, from this body, we understand that, and we're going to work very aggressively to do that. Thank you, each and every one of you.
I want, I want, and I want to say the same thing, you know, I, I thank you guys immensely for your dedication for the community, because, uh, it's, this is, what you guys do, um, has to be something that, that is a passion, um, you know, it, to be able to, I, I couldn't do what you do to listen to all those problems. I, I'm too soft, believe me, right? Uh, it, it, it is, it's, it's, it's got to be tough on you guys to hear of all these things, and, and I'm sure you celebrate the, the times when, uh, when things go absolutely right, and, and you, you know, you hear of somebody, you know, having a baby's birthed in the back of a car or something, and something like that happens, and everything works out right, you know? But, uh, but it's got to be a passion, and thank you for that passion.
I think we had one just recently, um, Cynthia, who is one of our newest additions, delivered a child.
My cat had kittens yesterday.
Tim, that's not the same. Congratulations, though. Congratulations, because you got to have the, that, that's, you know, that's got to be what keeps you going, is the, is that you can do, you can do amazing things and make amazing things happen, and it doesn't always work out that way, but, but it does work out that way, and that's what you, you know, that's got to be what you fight for, so thank you.
I think one of the, um, one of the probably toughest jobs you all have is trying to keep the caller calm, you know, because when anxiety sets in, and that, that caller doesn't understand the process, or doesn't understand what you're trying to do, and trying to keep them calm, first of all, because they can't, they can't do what they need to do on the, on the caller's side without, without that happening, so, um, I see that would be a big challenge. Anybody else?
Yes, I'd like to, to thank you, and in the past, I used to come down here quite frequently, didn't I, Mary? But now my husband has Parkinson's, and so I have more commitments at the house. But, uh, in 17, I had to call, and, uh, and of course, I was telling the 911 person that my husband was drunk because he was a diabetic, and, uh, he had, um, it was his birthday, and he didn't like the fact he had sugar-free items, so he went, bought a box of oatmeal cookies, and drank a half a gallon of sugared tea. And so, in a matter of about an hour, his blood sugar was 800, and drunk as a skunk. He couldn't stand up, he couldn't do anything, but, uh, we got him there and, uh, prevented a, a massive stroke and everything else, but, uh, so, I appreciate you, and, uh, I'm sorry I can't come down and visit more often, but, uh, my heart's with you, thank you.
Thank you.
Many thanks for answering the phone for everybody.
Mary, what both we always go through, it's, uh, you do have a great team. And, and the team, a good team, as we know even from Charlotte Prater days, comes, is generated and, and created by the, by the coach. You're, you're a tremendous coach.
Their, their supervisors who are great guys.
Yes, yes, and, and, you know, it all filters down from the top, and, so, um, I think each and every one of your employees respects you, sometimes it gets lonely at the top, but you've always done that very well, um, and, uh, I think each and every one of you respects you in your, in your, uh, title.
Well, I'd like to think of us as not only a team, but more family, where, um, it's okay, we can scrap and argue and kind of fuss amongst ourselves, but, um, heaven help the person who wants to pick out somebody and, uh, then start, uh, either, uh, trashing or damaging their name, their work, their reputation, um, but, um, they are truly my family.
All right.
And I would like to also tell you that when you were talking about additional employees, on the 16th of September, uh, we'll be having, um, is it five more? Four, we had two that was, was actually approved, but, um, they've already accepted other employment elsewhere. Um, so, we have, uh, four starting in a training class that Paula will, uh, be, uh, teaching beginning the 16th of September. Uh, so that, uh, will leave us then with, uh, two, uh, existing vacancies. Out of the new ones,
Right.
everyone has been, that, uh, uh, either resigned. Out of the new ones, everyone has been, that either resigned or asked to go to part-time, those people have been filled. But we still have two of the new positions that have never been filled available.
So, we'll get together, talk about some of it. I know Juan said that she always liked her job and stuff like that. Get together. Biggest thing is if we can get fully staffed, then maybe people can start enjoying China. That's a, that's a big plus. All right. I guess we're taking a break, so if you want, if you want, we can, we'll have you all down front. We'll stay here, just a few pages real quick, okay? We'll take a break just a minute.
We're right on schedule. See you at dawn. All right. We're back in session. Next on our agenda is Connecticut Petri, fiduciary supervisor for the state accounts of month of September. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, sir. How's everyone today?
Going well.
Doing very well.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Have a few here.
Even than last month, but we're expecting them to be publicated on this. Very busy, very busy right now. We have thirty-two final settlements for approval today, beginning with Janice Banks, Sharon Marie Bryant, Gary Lee, also known as Gary Albott, Linda Marie Catlett, Thomas Catlett, Hilda Helen Coker is an interim settlement for approval, Catherine Virginia Cookus, Scotty Hellens, Helen Elizabeth Fox, Curtis Green, Patricia Lynn Hamilton, John F Hansbrough Jr., who is also known as John Frederick Hansbrough Jr., Daniel Lincoln Harmon, Arthur Mowbray Harris, Eugene Kenzie Lee, Harriet Lee, Chad T Long, Linda Lou Nichols, Jean Marie Page, Daniel Carroll, also known as Daniel C Carroll, Duane Russell Peterson, Linda Diane Riggs, Leslie Carroll Roberts, Gary Douglas Saltzman, Eugene Shelton Jr., Charles William Shepherd, also known as Charles Shepherd, Sidney Jane Singleton, Thomas George Snow, James Mirvel Snyder, John H Topp, Donna Lee Vaughn, and an interim settlement for Betty Lee Young.
Okay. I entertain a motion on the thirty-two state accounts for the month of September.
A move to accept.
Question's been made. Second, any discussion? If not, on paper say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The motion carries and appears that you have no hearings to schedule?
No hearings to schedule.
Okay. And, um, okay. The last time you was in front of us, we talked about some things that we need to look at or something with the state. Any other questions?
And I haven't, I haven't put together a memo for that yet, but as soon as I get off go and do that, I presume we'll be put on the agenda.
Okay.
For those things.
All right. Thank you, Ken.
Have a good day.
You too.
All right. Chief, Chief Scott Wilson's here for the sheriff on three items.
See how efficient we were. We got done in three minutes. But anyway, chief, we have vehicle fleet. We have the request to re-designate a part-time silver process server to full-time. And then we have, you're also going to be asking us to fund or refund, they say, almost sounds like we're at an apartment store, but put funding for the two deputy sheriff positions. So let's do the vehicle fleet first.
Okay, sir. And when you said vehicle fleet, I thought we had two pieces there, vehicle fleet, two different issues. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that happened. So when we're talking about the vehicle fleet, the primary concern that we have here is, you're all well aware COVID-19 has made a lot of changes to everything that we do and the way we do business. One of the big changes we've seen was that manufacturers, specifically automobile manufacturers, shut a lot of their plants down as far as doing vehicles and they retoured to do things to make equipment for COVID-19. Because of that, it's become a very big shortage on police rated vehicles. And because of the timeframe that we're living in right now and the issues that we're dealing with nationwide, we're dealing with riots and issues and police involvement, that a lot of vehicles have been damaged and destroyed beyond repair. So the needs of police rated vehicles have become great here just in the last since preparticular year. Our concern is if we don't start planning ahead for replacement of our agency fleet, then we may end up on the bottom of the list when it comes time for when these manufacturers come back into their full productions and we may still be a year, maybe two years behind the timeframe before they even consider it. So what we've asked is for the council to consider looking at our fleet and considering replacement plan and going ahead and putting in RFPs, or RFPs, but that I can see if we can't get on the list to start planning ahead for these. I provided a letter. I hope everybody has copied that. I went down through our fleet and I tried to break it down and show you what we have. And I broke it down into several categories. I started with the first four vehicles are vehicles that we had that have been damaged either through accidents or something that's happened to them, such as blowing an engine, and they're beyond repairs. Those vehicles we would need to replace and they haven't been replaced in the state. There was four of those. It was a 2012 Dodge Charger, a 2013 Dodge Charger, a 2015 Ford Taurus, and another 2015 Ford Taurus. So those are the persons we would look at to replace because that's part of what we have right now. And the loss of those vehicles, what few vehicles we keep spare, we'd issue that. And we have hardly anything left, so if something goes down, we'll be jockeying parts around. The next group, I wanted to show what we have. There are vehicles that are in excess of 100,000 miles as of the date of this letter. And there are fifteen of those vehicles. We average about 20,000 miles a year per vehicle. So that's just an average. Some vehicles a little more, some a little bit less, but more than average, that's what we see. So we know these vehicles are already over 100,000 miles. And over the next year, year and a half, they're going to, they're going to gain a lot more. And we're probably with vehicles that have as much as, let's see, 179,000. We have some 145, 142, 131, 130,000 miles. So we have vehicles there we need to take into consideration because we know once they get above 100,000 miles, the maintenance costs start to go up on vehicles like this and it can become very costly just to try to keep and maintain them.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Have the, um, the total vehicles, were they part of the disposal auction? Thank you.
Well, I take it back. There are two that we currently have in storage now at 750. The programs were.
And the ones in storage, are they, have we decided that they're not going to be repaired?
They're totaled, sir. They're kept for parts for currently in operation.
Okay. Okay. So there are parts.
The ones that were totaled, those were the ones that still.
They had low enough miles on it to salvage parts, right? I guess.
And they're actually in storage down at 750.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. The next group of vehicles I listed on there, there are four of them. And these are vehicles that have, as of the date of the letter, at least 95,000 miles on them. And we expect them to reach 100,000 miles by the end of this, this calendar year. So we want to take a look at that. And then the last group I put down, there's six of those vehicles. These are vehicles that have somewhere between 75,000 and 95,000 miles. And we would anticipate them being above 100,000 miles by December of 2021. So what I wanted to try to do is give the council a picture of what we have in our vehicle fleet, the mileage that we have on them, and where we're at so we can take into consideration that for planning purposes. And what we're asking is the council to consider doing the RFPs and getting information so we can plan ahead for maybe later on this year, if nothing else, at least for next year sometime during the calendar year to try to replace some of these vehicles. And the letter I gave was trying to give you an idea of what the, what the status is of those vehicles.
So are you saying, if I count that up, that's a total of twenty-nine vehicles?
That's correct, sir. That, that's all of them. That's the ones from the damaged ones rated on through down to the ones in the lower category of 75,000 to 95,000 miles. Yes, sir. Twenty-nine vehicles.
Right. What's our scheduled rotation?
Well, the, the one thing that, that, and I can ask Mr. Wilson, Chief Wilson, but, um, and then Mr. Wind, you can respond as well, is currently right now, with the backlog of the vehicles that we actually have on someone order, it's about a year and a half term. By the time we get them, outfit them, and put them on the street for a year and a half.
Yes, sir. We, we have two right now that the bid was awarded back earlier in the year for two K9 vehicles.
That's not even in production now?
No, sir, we're not.
And, should I answer your question?
Well, no, I'm just, my question is how many, what is our rotation schedule calling for right now? I mean, we set up a rotation of what we were going to do per year and where are we at with that? Where are we at with that rotation? I understand that your, your total ones don't count into that rotation.
And remember, we have a great place, other than the two K9 vehicles that the sheriff has agreed to take for. We have a great place for first. We're out. We got everybody up to speed.
Right. This past year, there was none.
Correct. So to address your question, Councilor W, the initial program was looking at fourteen per year until we got to a point where it wasn't warranted. And we hit that by toe. And then we got into the situation where we now know we're eighteen months from delivery and use guarantee. So if you took action today to just start.
Very busy, very busy right now. We have thirty-two final settlements for approval today, beginning with Dan Elise Banks, Sharon Marie Bryant, Gary Lee, also known as Gary Albott, Linda Marie Catlett, Thomas Catlett, Hilda Helen Coker is in the interim settlement for approval, Catherine Virginia Cookus, Scotty Kellens, Helen Elizabeth Fox, Curtis Green, Patricia Lynn Hamilton, John F Hansbrough Jr., who is also known as John Frederick Hansbrough Jr., Daniel Lincoln Harmon, Arthur Mowbray Harris, Eugene Kenzie Lee, Harriet Lee, Chad T. Long, Linda Lou Nichols, Jean Marie Page, Daniel Carroll, also known as Daniel C. Carroll, Duane Russell Peterson, Linda Diane Riggs, Leslie Harold Roberts, Gary Douglas Saltzman, Eugene Shelton Jr., Charles William Shepherd, also known as Charles Shepherd, Sidney Jane Singleton, Thomas George Snow, James Mirvel Snyder, John H. Topp, Donna Lee Vaughn, and an interim settlement for Betty Lee Young.
Okay. I entertain a motion on the thirty-two state accounts for the month of September.
A move to accept.
Second. Question's been made, seconded, any discussion? If not, on paper say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries and appears that you have no hearings to schedule?
No hearings to schedule.
Okay. And, um, okay. The last time you was in front of us, we talked about some things that we need to look at or something with the state, any other?
And I haven't, I haven't put together a memo for that yet, but as soon as I get off go and do that, I presume we'll be put on the agenda.
Okay.
For those things.
All right, thank you, Ken.
Have a good day.
You too.
All right, Chief, Chief Scott Wilson's here for the sheriff on three items.
See how efficient we were, we got done in three minutes. Um, but anyway, chief, we have a vehicle fleet, we have the request to re-designate a part-time civil process server to full-time, and then we have, you're also going to be asking us to fund or refund, they say, it almost sounds like we're at an apartment store, but, um, put funding for the two deputy sheriff's positions, and so let's do the vehicle fleet first.
Okay, sir. And when you said vehicle fleet, I thought we had two pieces there, vehicle fleet, vehicle add, two different issues.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make sure that happened, so. When we're talking about the vehicle fleet, the primary concern that we have here is, you're all well aware COVID-19 has made a lot of changes to everything that we do and the way we do business. One of the big changes we've seen was that manufacturers, specifically automobile manufacturers, shut a lot of their plants down as far as doing vehicles, and they retoured to do things to make equipment for COVID-19. Because of that, it's become a very big shortage on police rated vehicles, and because of the timeframe that we're living in right now, and the issues that we're dealing with nationwide, we're dealing with riots and issues and police involvement, that a lot of vehicles have been damaged and destroyed beyond repair, so the needs of police-rated vehicles have become great here just in the last since, since we've been achieving. Our concern is if we don't start planning ahead for replacement of our agent fleet, then we may end up on the bottom of the list when it comes time for when these manufacturers come back into their full productions, and we may still be a year, maybe two years behind the timeframe before they even consider it. So what we've asked is for the council to consider looking at our fleet and considering replacement plan and going ahead and putting in RFPs, or RFPs, but that I can see if we can't get on the list and start planning ahead for these. Uh, I provided a letter, I hope everybody has copied that, I went down through our fleet and I tried to break it down and show you what we have, and I broke it down into several categories. I started with the first four vehicles are vehicles that we had that have been damaged either through accidents or something that's happened to them, such as a blown engine, and they're beyond repairs. Those vehicles we would need to replace, and they haven't been replaced in the state. There was four of those, it was a 2012 Dodge Charger, a 2013 Dodge Charger, a 2015 Ford Cars, and another 2015 Ford Cars. So those are the persons we would look at to replace because that's part of what we have right now, and the loss of those vehicles, what few vehicles we keep spare, we'd issue that, and we have hardly anything left, so if something goes down, we'll be jockeying parts around, which is what I have. The next group I wanted to show what we have, there are vehicles that are in excess of one-hundred-thousand miles as of the date of this letter, and there are fifteen of those vehicles. We average about twenty thousand miles a year per vehicle, so that's just an average. Some vehicles a little more, some a little bit less, but on an average, that's what we see. So we know these vehicles are already over a hundred thousand miles, and over the next year, year and a half, they're going to, they're going to gain a lot more. And we're talking with vehicles that have as much as, let's see, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, um, we have some hundred and forty-five, hundred and forty-two, hundred and thirty-one, hundred and thirty thousand miles. So we have vehicles there we need to take into consideration, because we know once they get above a hundred thousand miles, the maintenance costs start to line up on vehicles like this, and it can become very costly just to try to keep and maintain them.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Have the, um, the total vehicles, were they part of the disposal auction?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I take it back, there are two that we currently have in storage now, seven fifty vehicles, all partially, the programs were, no, that's for certain.
And the ones in storage, are they, have we decided that they're not going to be repaired?
Many.
They're totaled, sir, they're kept for parts for currently in operation.
Okay, so there are parts.
The ones that were totaled, those were the ones that still.
They had low enough miles on it to salvage parts, right? I guess.
And they're actually in storage now at seven fifty, all on three.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. The next group of vehicles I listed on there, there are four of them, and these are vehicles that have, as of the date of the letter, at least ninety-five thousand miles on them, and we expect them to reach one-hundred thousand miles by the end of this, this calendar year. So we want to take a look at that, and then the last group I put down, there's six of those vehicles, these are vehicles that have somewhere between seventy-five thousand and ninety-five thousand miles, and we would anticipate them being above one-hundred thousand miles by December of twenty twenty-one. So what I wanted to try to do is give the council a picture of what we have in our vehicle fleet, the mileage that we have on them, and where we're at, so we can take into consideration that for planning purposes. And what we're asking is the council to consider doing the RFPs and getting information out so we can plan ahead for maybe later on this year, if nothing else, at least for next year sometime during the calendar year, and try to replace some of these vehicles. And the letter I gave was trying to give you an idea of what the, what the status is of those vehicles.
So are you saying, if I count that up, that's a total of twenty-nine vehicles?
That's correct, sir. That, that's all, that's the ones from, the damaged ones rated on through, down to the ones in the lower category of seventy-five thousand to ninety-five thousand miles, yes, sir, twenty-nine vehicles.
Right.
What's our scheduled rotation?
Well, the, the one thing that, that, and I can ask Mr. Wilson, Chief Wilson, but, um, and then Mr. Wine, you can respond as well, is currently right now, with the backlog of the vehicles that we actually have on someone order, it's about a year and a half turnaround. By the time we get them outfitted, we'll put them on the street for a year and a half.
Yes, sir. We, we have two right now that the bid was awarded back earlier in the year for two K-9 vehicles.
That's not even in production now?
No, sir, we're not.
And, should I answer your question?
Well, no, I'm just, my question is how many, what is our rotation schedule calling for right now? I mean, we set up a rotation of what we were going to do per year, and where are we at with that? Where are we at with that rotation? I understand that your, your total ones don't count into that rotation.
And remember, we have a great place, other than the two K-9 vehicles that the sheriff has agreed to take for, we have a great place for them first, for, we got everybody up to speed, great.
Right, because past year there was not.
Correct. So to address your question, Council President W, the initial program was looking at fourteen per year until we got to a point where it wasn't warranted, and we hit that by toe, and then we got into the situation where we now know we're eighteen months from delivery and use guarantee. So if you took action today to just start the process to advertise, you could do the math on these and factor out eighteen months where they'll be, you'll just start to see them then, is kind of.
But that, but, but that will fit into our rotation, so the ones that we've replaced from, have we, we haven't been through a five-year rotation?
No, sir, no, sir. We used the two rounds, yeah.
Two rounds.
Right.
So what Councilperson Delia is asking us is, we, we went through two rounds of buying, and this year was, was zero, so we're already into our third year, this will put us into our fifth year. So in, in year five, we would be replacing cars from year one?
Not yet, no, sir.
Right, it'd be year six that we would do that.
That's right.
So this would actually put us a year ahead of our schedule.
And the intent of your initial schedule was never to just replace, to get the fleet current and healthy? The fleet was in horrific condition when you started, and this addresses an opportunity at year five, without action, we would be right back to where we were three years ago.
I guess, I guess the question would be then, what, how many vehicles would we have been asking to replace then over the next two years, because it wouldn't be twenty-nine?
It would be, well, it would be based on what we have with the statistics gathered and where the equipment is, you're about, you would be at twenty-five, but you have four total vehicles, it'd be twenty-nine.
And, and those four vehicles that were totaled, the sheriff has, has helped us out in the past on some of that stuff, but we also, that was part of our plan that we didn't factor in would be cars that were totaled that weren't reimbursed a hundred percent from the insurance company, so we know we have that gap, we got to fill. So you're saying twenty-five plus the full would put us, this would, this would follow our program that we set up, from day one?
And that's basically a two-year, two-year cycle, I mean, it's twenty, two, if you're going fourteen a year, that's a twenty-eight vehicle cycle right there, and that's going to put these vehicles, some of them into, um, some of them probably into the hundred-and-thirty-thousand-mile range by the time they get brought into service.
That's correct, sir.
Right, and, and even though we, even though we believe that the hundred-thousand-mile range is not as critical as it used to be, we're talking hundred and thirty, you know, once you get a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty, it, then it becomes more issues with things just wearing out on us.
So let's look at this as twenty-five replacement, or twenty-five vehicles in the rotation, four of them that have been totaled, and those four, we said we have to pull money out of our contingency account to pay for them, right?
If, if the council authorized an RFP today, by the time we get it out on the street, if the upset general needs, in, any amount of vehicles that you authorize, they won't, they won't even get the budget.
Right, and we don't pay for them until we take the leverage.
But I don't, I don't, I, and I, I would have to agree with the chief, I think that it's probably something that we should at bare minimum get out and look at and find out what the timelines are and, and be able to do that so that we're not, everything that we've done to this point doesn't fall by the wayside, um, two years from now.
And, and as you know, everything that we do is a product of budget.
Right.
All we're asking is to allow us, if you're, you're on the street, see what the prices look like and the delivery, and that's one of the things that we'll factor into it. In years past, maybe charge a few, that we're available, or forward for the, we don't know what's available, but say for example, forward and, and price the route, then we would look at time of delivery, that certainly has to be factored in.
What time of delivery and outfitting cost too, because one of the things was that we was trying to keep them all the same if possible because of the outfitting cost.
Well, and the sheriff and chief have done a good job with some of those outfitting costs, so the cameras and such that are in the vehicles, they can now be migrated between because they're current and active, their light bars can, it depends.
On the mod, right.
So they have done a very good job in taking care and uniforming that piece, so what we typically planned as a twelve-thousand-dollar outfitting cost per, we know is going to come down somewhere between three and four thousand dollars, because they won't be camp, they need an install, they won't need to buy them, so I think the total cost for purchase and deployment is going to be less than previously seen because of, we're, we're to that point now, it's current.
Only question that everyone could, to you three is, and I hate to promote negativity, but if we've got four vehicles now that's totaled, we know we're probably going to have more before we take the order.
I'd like to say you're wrong, sir, but, uh, history shows that there will be issues, yes, sir.
Right, I mean, I mean, I don't want to order four replacements of total vehicles when we're probably going to have six to eight.
But you're also going to have the low end of the cycle that's the second.
We can bring them.
They will keep those, we'll keep those, so.
For the, for the, for the.
Right, and yeah, then maybe some of these that are doing, I mean, you guys are keeping much better track of the maintenance records and those type of things on these vehicles, so there may be some of the things that we've done to a couple of these vehicles that are going to put us into a longer time run too, um, you know, that, that the maintenance is ahead of the schedule, so to speak, on.
And, and they do a good job placing those vehicles in areas of the organization where they aren't in pursuit situations, where they're kept from that.
Right.
So to the, to the chief and sheriff's credit, you know, where you may have a judicial assigned or an investigator assigned person, they aren't using a brand-new police-equipped package, and they could use one of these, so as a team effort, that's exactly right. So to answer your question, Council President, I would think that some of the low-end ones that, that will be the one-twenty, one-thirties, would be well-suited as spares for them, to buy through something like that, they can shuffle around, but chief, I'll defer to you on the final one, sir.
True, that's what we'll do, we'll take these, and we've done it, just in the last year with some vehicles that, uh, the insurance might normally total, but we paid some money on the gun funds or something to repair them because we felt they were worthy of that, and it helps keep this fleet, we may move them to the, the shift spare in case somebody goes down, they can use that for a day or two, so we try to bump it around, manage it as well as we can, and then he was talking about, like with the SROs and the, uh, the court security, they have some of their own vehicles, uh, with the exception of Matt Reddane, because Matt's a big man, he's going to get into a certain size vehicle, but, uh, other than that, we, we try to do that and keep the newer vehicles on the road, so we try to manage that fleet, and, and we've got vehicles that we know they've got a little bit of age, if they're not real bad in mileage or decent running, if they're damaged, if we can repair them and keep them for a spare or put them someplace else, that's what we've been doing to this point, we'll continue.
Probably want to get more into this conversation once we figure out what's even available and, and, you know, get an RFP back and get more into that conversation of what really need to move forward with.
If, if all of the council president could, so I think if memory serves me right, you have to get me that, one of the three shifts, and chief, you have a couple of photographs out there?
Yes, sir. Uh, actually, we moved four ground ones to spares because a couple of cruisers we had were spared, although I have a new Irish, we're not going to, we're not going to, we get back to our sixty, with these two, we'll get them back to sixty, we'll have three spare vehicles.
So we have, we can see we have three spares, you know, as you know, once we get in winter months, and then the fall, we have the air strikes, we have accidents that we gain control, we use those three spare vehicles.
And, and understand, when they say spare, they're not really extra, we take a vehicle that's out for three-day service, they're in that spare, so.
That's a rotation vehicle, not a spare.
It is, yes, sir. And like Mr. Davis was saying about the winter months, we get into this winter months, we start getting into snow or the ice time, then what we do is each one of those three vehicles assigned to shift, we pull them back to all three shifts, and they'll run them in the shifts to try to reduce the amount of our other vehicles on the road, so we use them to play a bit of more.
What's that, judicial vehicles, well, they, are they, they're fairly decent, right? They could be a rotation vehicle, right?
Which vehicles are you talking about?
The ones that, but the deputies are working at the storehouse.
Oh, the judicial security? Uh, yes, sir, there's some of the older vehicles, but yes, sir, they're fully equipped, we use them.
I mean, we came.
If, if chief, if there were opportunities to put them in vehicles that were not police-rated vehicles, and they could use them, he needed them.
Man, you're reading my mind, if you had to, if you had to, if, if you had to go out because we don't have any spares, right?
That's absolutely an option, we'd have to look for a book, I guess.
Do we go out and purchase new vehicles for the ones, you know, I'm just saying that could, that may have to be.
Yeah, that's something you could do almost immediately.
The judicial, because they don't do any, very rarely do they transport anybody to the jail, I mean, that's, that's an extreme complication, the only time it would become an issue is if, um, the court is shut down because for judicial reasons, and the judge is rounding through, something like that, and we do pull them back.
Serving papers.
And help them service them. That's what I'm saying, is if it pops up, then we have to, we have to read that and move forward.
Right, right, because I mean, we made the right call to get rid of the ones we auctioned off, right?
Yes, sir.
Because that was, started a year ago, um, so just saying, and that would be worse even than school resource officers, which I've been watching some pretty neat YouTube videos about school resource officers, about how they get involved with the students and, and they're, they're kind of interacting with dance moves and cheering and all that stuff on the gym floor, I'll have to start sending some of them to you.
Well, if he's going to do it, I'm going to watch, I'm going to tell you that right now.
This is exactly.
You're talking about.
I'm going to start making a run YouTube. We might, we might even have Matt show up for that one.
The YouTube videos you watch don't have any Berkeley County depth.
Oh, no, but I mean, you know, you're talking about creating that relationship with them students, and it's just like, wham, it's done.
Yeah.
We could talk about this.
All right, um, so, uh, I, I personally, uh, think it's a good idea to get ahead of this curve, um, and it does, according to Mr. Wine and Mr. Davis and, and chief, it does keep us in our plan to, to actually order twenty, or not order, we, it's too late to piggyback and order, right? All right, so put out an RFP for twenty-five, uh, vehicles, um, that would take about eighteen months before they get on the road, that would be in the rotation, and four replacement vehicles, oh, let me back up to twenty-five, would come out of our funding that we have set aside, um, and then, financing, I should say, and then the four vehicles would be, uh, vehicles we're looking to, uh, replace, ones that are totaled through, um, contingency, is that correct, Mr. Davis? Um, anybody want to make that motion?
Turn move.
Tag it.
Right now, all we're doing is, is giving Gary the, actually, we didn't have to make a motion, it would be a direction, I'm sorry, so is everybody okay to direct, withdraw the motions, I guess?
Withdraw the motion.
Yes, sir.
Just, just give you a direction to move forward with that?
Up to twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, right.
Plus out.
Plus out, yeah, yeah, okay, all right, so that was done.
All right, the, the second issue with vehicles, uh, we put a letter in, asked to consider to add a, uh, a vehicle, an unmarked vehicle to the fleet, we had a vehicle that we fired through, through the courts, it was forfeited because of the case that we worked, and.
Ah, we can't talk about that.
I can't, I want to know the vehicle, sir, because I don't want to put that information out here. I would be glad.
It's a Z O six Corolla.
Smart dog.
I just sent to the council all the information on it so you can see what it is, but, um, we got the vehicle, no pause to us through the courts, and we can use that for, for working undercover work and things like that, so we would like the council to consider adding that to the fleet. We know we're managing the fleet, we're trying to be careful, we don't want to add vehicles to the fleet, because we want to try to keep it within reason.
How do you pull a license off of them? You can't put it, and, hang on.
There are means. That's probably something else that you don't need to know, Jim.
That, that work well for the undercover works, sir.
You have a very good.
Just, just as.
Yeah.
There's been a car outside, my.
Why don't you spell it all out for us so we can broadcast it and let everybody know what to look for?
We need to have the right or getting the name of that account, because that's the end of the.
We can assure them, right?
Um, we've had that issue, and to pay us, just want to make sure that it is tied to the council.
Would you, would you like a motion?
Yeah, uh, it, it, does it fit into our program? Okay, all right, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, and any further discussion, Mr. Bonhardt?
Nope. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries?
Okay, um, the next one we'd like to talk to you about is, we, the sheriff has made a request to re-designate a part-time employee to make it a full-time employee. This is our civil processor, we have one civil processor we use, this is Mr. Robert Chau, he's been working with us for quite a few years, uh, his job has become extremely important, especially in this day and age with all the increasing calls and everything, dealing with manpower. What he does is he goes out and serves just about every civil process paper there is, except for something like a route of execution, uh, or the actual setups or wrongful occupations, because an officer actually has to do that, but he takes care of the others, and I ran some numbers just, uh, this, this morning to, to get an idea, and I'll give you an example, he, he worked three days in July for us, and he made forty-five attempts, and he got twenty-eight papers served. But in August, he worked seventeen days, he attempted forty, a hundred and forty-four papers and served two hundred and seventy-four papers during the month of August, but by doing that, that's time that the deputies don't have to take, or they're riding someplace, going down looking these people up, this is something he takes care of for us.
What did you say, the August, the, the, the last one, the attempt?
That was pretty impressive.
Forty-four papers attempted, two hundred and seventy-four served.
So he served more than he tried to?
Yes, well, yeah, the ones that he went there and he couldn't get, some of the served, he may have attempted them one or two times before.
Okay.
But he made a hundred and forty-four attempts.
Say, huh, where'd he do that?
Two hundred and seventy-four papers served in seventeen days.
Well, I, I don't know, well, go ahead.
What he has done is those deputies now, only thing they go in and look for is the rest of execution and the wrongful setups, and that speeds that process up because now on day shift, those deputies jump on that, we're getting setups taken care of a lot more, we don't have the, uh, the, uh, the renter, or the, uh, the landlords are not fussing because we're, we're getting a little while, getting backed up, we're caught up in COVID-19, it's been a big help for us in doing that, and he's been working quite a few hours because not getting back into it until the July timeframe, we know we can only work him a hundred and, uh, thousand forty hours in a course a year, so he's been working diligently at that. The second thing is, is he came to us here a couple of weeks ago, and he said, hey, I'm available, if you need somebody to go on a trip, I'll go on the trips. He started taking trips, so we'd send two deputies, we sent a deputy and him, which we can legally do. Uh, just last week, he worked six hours, went home about four o'clock in the evening, sat down for a little while, got caught ten o'clock, because we, we hadn't known, he came out, took the trip, went all the way to Huntington, came back, they were back at station around seven, seven fifteen, and he stayed over and worked another three hours to go out and test some papers that were immediate service, only had like three-day turnaround, we had to get them back to the courts, and he went and had those papers served, and he's been doing that with us. By doing that, he takes and frees up a deputy, I don't have to bring a deputy any of them anymore, they all pull somewhere from the ship, or pull from the ship, instead of a second deputy, so it's been a big, big help to us. We would like to see what we can give consideration to make in this a full-time position. I know that's an additional amount of money, and when you're looking at it, his, uh, his salary rate now is about fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars a year. If we make it full-time with the benefits and everything, that takes the total compensation up over forty-five thousand, which is going to be an increase of around, close to thirty thousand dollars a year. The money we would be paying him would surely be saving us in the long run, because his salary is a lot less than the deputies is, we're paying overtime, he's a lot more readily available, and it doesn't pay deputies off of that.
On each process service, is there, is there fees that are acquired with this?
Yeah, some of the papers there is, yes.
Yes, that's what I thought.
And that's generally handled at the court levels, at the circuit court, they collect the fees, it goes into a fund, but they, I think they have to send out a, they're paying us once a month if I'm not mistaken, man, and then that goes into different areas, part of that civil process fee goes into the deputy sheriff retirement system, so.
Chief, if you would, um, isn't there three positions in seven oh one that was funded? It's, and actually, right now, currently, there's only one being used, and the other one's being paid out of seven hundred account?
None being.
None being, so, so how elaborate on that one?
Also, I didn't realize, I thought, because I thought we took the one a year ago when we made an increase on Jason Scales, I thought we took one of those positions.
These are three deputies.
Oh, deputy, okay, we did have three civil process positions.
These are three deputies that were assigned to seven oh one.
But we do have vacancies right now that we haven't filled for the deputy.
Sheriff took them, there's no one being paid out of seven oh one right now. Did you move all the deputies over to seven hundred?
Into seven hundred. Yes, sir. But if we get to the full sixty, and that's, we'll come out of seven oh one.
How many vacancies do you have now?
Um, Mr. Davis, let me think here real quick, um, we have two that were, the process is a physical, and then we have one that we're holding open because we have a civil service hearing, we're supposed to, we have three vacancies right now, yes, sixty.
So if you want to order them, you'll order them.
It's just the one since seven oh one. Yes, sir.
That was my question. Is there's nothing being drawn out of seven oh one at all?
Well, I, I got some follow-up on that. Right now, there's no one being drawn out of seven oh one, except for the part-timer, I'm sure. So.
Everybody, all current employees of the sheriff's department.
Is all under seven hundred. Which, which tells me that the three. So, so are we talking that the. Well, that'd be a discussion another day, how we address that. Because either, right now, I don't know why they would move from seven oh one to seven hundred, but if that's the case, then all funding for seven oh one would go over to the seven hundred to balance it out.
I think what the chief was saying is they have three vacancies. For all intents and purposes, those three vacancies are currently assigned to seven oh one. So when they onboard the next three new hires. They'll be, they'll be onboarded.
Okay, so there doesn't have to be any, any budget revisions right now?
Correct.
Alright. Okay.
And even with everyone, and, and everyone, now this control report was just for the end of July, so salary should be about eight point three three percent. And that's pretty much where seven hundred is, they're at eight point one four for salaries. You know, insurance is six point five five because not everyone takes the insurance. So they're right, pretty the first month of the fiscal year, they're right.
Alright. So then, if, if Mr. Shoal would, would go to part-time, from part-time to full-time, we would have to, no, we don't have to choose, the money's in seven oh one.
Well, he's currently assigned. He's on the payroll now, he's under seven hundred, so we have to look at that. But just through the turnover, it's something we would look at, so maybe later on the fiscal year, we might have to. What really comes into play is when we set next year's budget, because the next year's budget will be set based on the number of F T D's who currently live that's assigned seven hundred.
So typically, typically though, we would, we would have the money in the account. Because we can't have a position that's not fully funded. But and, and the chief and the sheriff understand, just like everybody else, we don't intermingle payroll with operating side of the budget. We've had people try, but we're very firm on that, because that, that changes everything, makes a budget nightmare for the following year.
Yes, sir. And, and for purposes of seven hundred, we, just, just so we can keep track of the positions, we have a seven hundred. Seven hundred A, purposes of my spreadsheet accounts, seven hundred employees are all in the, so there are sixty of those. Seven hundred A is all the administrative support employees, and that's what Mr. Shaw is.
Okay, so, so right now, the ones that we, what it does name for seven oh one is in seven hundred, which fully staffs seven hundred. So. I'm getting ahead of myself here. You're also asking for two more deputies, which is the next thing that you're going to ask for. Which the money would be in seven oh one for those already?
No, those are, those are positions they want to, wants to infuse the budget for two positions.
We have fifty-seven uniformed deputies.
On the seven hundred account?
Seven hundred.
Okay.
Three uniformed deputies in seven oh one.
And that makes a sixty for seven hundred.
If you increase the uniform count from sixty to sixty-two, then you have infused.
Okay, I was, I was under the mis, I was thinking there were sixty deputies funded in seven hundred and three and seven oh one, or sixty-three total. So it's fifty-seven and thirty.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. I'll back up and let you catch up to it.
We're just asking consideration if you consider making that a full-time position. And our justification is because we visit there and, and we're showing it right now, he's. Because he didn't start doing this until mid-year, we have a thousand forty hours, so he, he's working on average of four days a week. If we keep it a part-time, then come first of the year, he's going to have to drop.
So are you saying?
This way, he'll drop back to twenty hours a week, so well, that takes away from what we're trying to do to keep the deputies, have them serve papers and have to take off chairs.
So are you saying this program is working better now than it has because, and, and I'm not trying to shoot holes in anything here. But that's, the, the, the paper serving process is the worst in any place that I deal with here in Berkeley County. I mean, we don't, we don't, and I say we, my, my, my daughter that handles that, she doesn't even go through the, the system anymore. We go straight to bondsman and have bondsman serve, because, because what happens is we don't get them served and then we can't get, we miss our court dates and, you know, we have to reschedule. And it's just an absolute nightmare and has been for the past.
Paid fees?
Twenty years.
There's no service attempts?
Yeah, for the last twenty years. And, and when we pay bondsman, it gets done, every time.
I have to answer that to the, to the courts quite frequently as to why a paper determines no service at all that we had for twenty-eight or thirty days. So I, I do understand exactly what you're saying. Since Mr. Shaw has done this, he walks in in the morning and now all the civil papers except for the wrongful. And, and it's the wrongful setups. He'll serve the initial wrongful twenty-day service. But except for the wrongful setups and the writs of execution, there's a folder up front and it's put, there's a note right on it says, deputies, leave alone for Bob, Bob wants him. He comes in, picks that folder up about six-thirty, seven o'clock every morning, and he's gone. We'll see him around four o'clock in the evening, young man, he comes in, does his activity sheet, turns them in, and that's why he has those kind of numbers where he's serving that amount of people. So he's out there constantly. And he's doing one other thing, too. I think the sheriff had mentioned to the council here a few weeks back, that we've been talking with Mr. Hess's assessor's office, and we're having an issue, we've always had an issue with outstanding tags. Mr. Hess's people are collecting those tags and sending information, we're running checks home, see if we can help them. Mr. Shaw's doing the same thing. When he's out and he's serving these papers, he's seeing these other state tags, he is not collecting that down at some of the back. So we're usually him in a multiple, multiple facet situation, but he's doing a lot of different things. But everything he's doing is trying to help the county, it's definitely helping the deputies and the forms that are doing these because they don't have to group these. And we've had better service in the last thirty days of getting papers served in the courts than we've had probably in the last three years.
Well, I know, and I'll have, I'll have to look into it because I've had this conversation many times with members of the Home Builders Association that own real estate rental properties and, and as far as I know, none, none of those people are using the, the program. And so I, I need to have a conversation and find out how that's working because I, I know we haven't used it in a long time, just because it, it, it plain out costs everybody money and if you use that program.
And he just, again, he just started into this hot and heavy July one. As he was out for a little while for the first part of the year, wasn't able to do any work, and, and the COVID nineteen issue popped up, and he wasn't able to do anything with that. So he just started back with us July one, and these are the numbers we're seeing just since July one. So he has made a significant impact on, on the way we do business, better, not to the work, but to the back.
The other thing, too, that we had conversations about, too, chief, is, is, and I, I have to agree, I agree with Dan because I've talked to other people. They just don't want to go through the hassle anymore, but, but the, the other thing that you talked about was, was the arrival for the mental hygiene. Which by itself is a huge savings, it keep, not only does it save money, but also keeps that deputy here in Berkeley County.
Yes, sir.
So that, that's.
And we're, we're working in a builder reserve program, we're moving forward with that, Lieutenant Burns is doing a great job working with the, the chief, Raker. And we're starting to get a few more people involved. We're hoping to get people, people involved and be willing to take some of these. During the week, it's still hard, but on the weekends, we have one reserve that will go out on the weekends and we're trying to get some involved as well. So if we get done that saves us even there. That's a program in.
Yeah, and that day, day and age when that was actually founded forty-some years ago, that was a very strong program.
Yes, sir, it was. They went, probably ninety-five percent of the trips we took, the reserve went with us.
Right.
Go back to when this all really started up too, back then, at that point in time, I think it was the H H R, they reimbursed the sheriff's office for meals. So we took people to, we used to pay them for meal when we were with us, so that was a little bit of an incentive beginning to go off. Yes, things have changed.
So is it, is it the intent to move the part-time funding, if, if this, if this gets approved, the, the part-time funding amount that's in the seven oh one A? Move that to the seven oh one and, and then infuse the rest of it to make that position whole? And what is the amount of that, that would have to be infused to make that whole?
It's budgeted, it's fifteen thousand seven fifty-six is budgeted. The total compensation cost with retirement and insurance will be forty-five point seven three, so it's up, it's about thirty thousand.
And then that adds, then it adds that, the whole amount to the next year's budget of, of, what would you, what did you say the whole amount was?
Forty-five thousand seven.
That's with, with first?
That's no.
Okay.
So you would end up with three uniformed full-time positions in seven oh one and one full-time civilian position.
Okay, well, you've asked us for consideration and we, let us, let us consider that and we'll try to make it an agenda item in the next.
Truthfully, I suppose, I, I didn't think you would give me an answer today, but we just asked if you would consider it, and we wanted to tell you what our reasoning for it is and what our justification is, and we greatly appreciate your consideration.
Okay.
The last one is the funding, the refunding for two deputy sheriff positions. We like, like for you to do the same thing here and give consideration to refunding that. If you recall back in January of two thousand seventeen, when this administration came in, we came in, we had sixty positions on the books. And we appeared before this council and talked, and the council, this council agreed that there was two positions we needed. One of them was, was a deputy position because we had the new judge position here in the county, so we needed another person in the judicial security team. The other position was, the previous administration done away with two and three captains' positions, and, and we appeared before you. Make a presentation that we couldn't manage with just the one captain and chief, and we agreed and they gave us a second position, the position of captain. So we had sixty-two positions. But in two thousand seventeen, we were not fully manned, and even in two thousand eighteen, and actually, not until February of just last year have we made to the full positions of sixty positions. It's been a struggle to keep people onboard for multiple reasons. But in two thousand eighteen, we had certain positions that hadn't been filled, and we had appeared before this council, the council gave consideration and granted a separation plan, which is the first time we've had a separation plan for deputy sheriffs. Part of that agreement was that the funding would come from the sheriff's budget as much as possible, and to those positions, we use the funding for that to help with that. This council put out a letter and advised that, and, excuse me, even made comment in their letter that if at any point in time we got to sixty positions. Then we could petition this council and they would give reconsideration for potentially putting the funding back into those two positions. Right now, as of last week when we appeared, last week, before last week appeared, in reference to hiring new people, that would bring us up to sixty. Well, at the time we did petition to you all, we didn't realize we were going to have a resignation, so we, we lost one in the process. As we're setting right now, we have three vacancies. We have two that are going through the process for the physicals. If the physicals come out well, then we'll bring them onboard, and we have one position left. And that one's right now is under review because there's going to be agreements filed through social service on that, and so we're waiting to push that up. But we really believe we have what we need to get to the sixty here before the end of this, this calendar year. We're asking your consideration to go back and look at those two positions that we're unfunded and see if we can refund those positions and bring them back into the sheriff's office. We need those. You validated that need in January two thousand seventeen, and you gave us the two positions that we had. And we would ask that if possible and the money's available, we would ask your consideration to refunding those positions, because we need the help, we need some of that. And truthfully, it would be a help, it'll be helped down the road, and as it is right now, we have, we have one in the academy. And one returned from the academy because they didn't pass the run, they go back in January. We have these two new ones that we're getting ready to bring onboard, they'll probably go to a January class, and then the third position. So we're looking probably June of next year before we get these people back on the road to help us. So we'll struggle, but it would be nice to know that we have the additional positions that we can plan for, we know that there's some, we think they're in the future. So what we're asking for is for you all to discuss it and give reconsideration to refunding these two positions to help us out.
You, you're also asking for two vehicles with that, I'm assuming, right?
Okay, you should, if you say, give me a second, let me take, take a look at my vehicles. Yes, sir, we would need to keep one, probably two of our older vehicles.
Not two new ones, but two of the older ones that we would be replacing, right?
The older models that can do that, yes.
Right, but eventually it's going to add to the, the whole, the whole rotation, so.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's a hundred and something thousand dollars per deputy for the first year.
Recall, as part of the budgetary custom of purpose of the year, sheriff indicated that he was going to make application for the cop's grant. For additional deputies and the council put funding in contingency. Since that time, the cop's grant is not approved, but we did fund deputies, including the outpidding.
So we would take two of the deputies that we said and use them for this position.
But when we set aside money for the deputy, we also included the outpidding with this. So that money is setting in.
Yeah, it was, it was, and, and chief, to be fair, not only, well, how many do you have currently right now in military duty?
We have three that are currently deployed outside the continental United States, and then we have one that took a voluntary position at the Air National Guard, and he'll be out in twelve days, so we have four.
So you have four. And, and when they're out on military duties, they have nothing coming out of your, your compensation with tables, is that correct?
Once they utilize their military leave, they're entitled to thirty days a year. One that just went to the Air National Guard, that's all he gets because of the type job he took, so his compensation will end on eighteen September.
Okay, so they get thirty.
Country, they got thirty additional days, but theirs is all being used up also.
But thirty or sixty days at the max?
That's correct.
If they're gone for six months, they get thirty to sixty days. So what I'm saying is, and I spoke about this this morning, was right now, currently, your sheriff's department is very similar to central dispatch. There's, there's, there's always been a fairly large rotation.
Yes, sir.
Of trying to keep retention, right? And like you said, for your department, so there's a lot of reasons why that happens out there in today's world. So at the end of the year, even though, like we said earlier, we have to fully fund those positions at the end of the year. There's a possibility that money could be coming back into the general budget because of not being fully staffed all the time.
Yes, sir.
Right? I mean, we all have to be fair to each other.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Right?
And just so, you know, we're talking, just to give you an idea, of the deputies we have, thirty percent of the deputies we have have less than two years' service in the Berkeley County Sheriff's Office, seventeen of them. Twenty-two of them have less than four years. That's thirty-eight percent of our force. Fifty percent of our force have less than five years' service. We have a very young and somewhat inexperienced partner.
I would say that would be true for many of the police officers out there.
In this year, there's been massive changes to police departments across the nation, and right here in this general area, yes, everybody are relooking at their departments for hiring people. Because there's, we're not the only agency that's seen issues as far as getting people to apply for jobs. Everybody's having a trouble.
Is the majority of the police officers that are retiring in the different areas? And you're feeling, are they completely getting out of it, or are they looking for a new place? I'm just asking to get, can we?
To say, sorry, I don't know if I could say that, but I will tell you, there are a large number, because I've talked to a lot of people, there are a large number of police officers that are retired that said, I've done this and that. Because of the way we're looked at, the way we're treated, the issues that are going on nationwide, and most people have said that enough, I've done my time. Some of them may go do other things, but they, they may go drive parts for a parts house, something like that, but do other type of work and stuff like that, most of them work well.
Yeah, because I think you recruited one semi-retired. Yeah, because I think you recruited one semi-retired deputy from somewhere else, right? Recently, didn't you? I thought we did.
I got three temporaries that are replacing the one that was deployed.
That's what it is. That's what it is.
Yeah, I don't think they brought anybody on board that had retired from someplace else. So it's just, we have three temporaries of police officers that came back, we got their certifications.
That's what I'm talking about.
And they're here only until those three come back from. And as it is right now, just so the council for information, we've not been formally told any specific date. We're going by what a little bit we're hearing from the deputies that's over there. It's looking like their processes will start somewhere around the first part of October for the return. Our anticipated date is this point in time, six December, before those three deputies will be back.
So the ones that's filling in those positions are any of those you think that would go full-time?
Not at this point in time, but I do know all three of them are interested in staying on. At least one of them has stayed on to fill the position that the gentleman at the International Guard, to fill on his terms, you want, so hopefully that will help us. Last one to continue to work that job, it would be an issue. None of them said anything about full-time.
All right. And just to be fair, and it's not disrespecting any men in uniform, because I totally appreciate each and every one of you all. But I'm understanding in a rad, I took to Charleston and back the other day, that we only have currently twelve state troopers in that area right now?
I've not had any conversation within the last couple of months. The last information I had was probably, see, this is in March, and at that time, it was my understanding that deputies or troopers are working rodents eleven here.
Yeah, and God help them, you know, because that's, you're thinking, that's maybe, that's very few. I'll say it that way, very, very few.
They're still working three shifts, it doesn't put that many of them out on the road.
Right, right.
There needs to be that many on each shift.
Well, and so, I'm saying that because the state of West Virginia was trying to make a huge recruitment a year ago. It sounds like they weren't successful.
They held the one class, and I don't know the exact number, one of their class sizes using around fifty personnel, but nuts. I think only one of that class came to this area, most of them went to other regions in the state. We didn't see no relief up here.
So I'll say this, is our state, some of our state is saying to, to, no more tax increases, no fees. They always vote against it, but the problem with that is, is they're shifting the burden from the state to the counties.
Yes, sir.
Right, because we get emails about why you need more money. This is one of the reasons why we need more money, right?
And we have a situation that's been presented to us with this academy class that we've never had to face before, and it's going to take a toll on our budget. The deputy that's down there right now, the academy made the decision because of COVID- nineteen, they're not allowing anybody to come home. So we went from sixteen weeks to ten weeks, that's seven days a week that during training, that's two days a week, sixteen hours every week, overtime now we get to pay that we've never had to pay.
But if our state, if our state would be able to fund the positions and recruit and keep up with the pay scale, right? Because we know the governor, prior governor has put a freeze on their pay for many years.
Yes, sir.
Right? If we're short twenty-some state troopers in Berkeley County, and you guys continue to tell us that you're understaffed because of call volume, because the call volume, in my opinion, has shifted, right? With no disrespect to our local guys, because I told you, I love them to death. That's two million dollars, just in the police side, just to stay even, right? Two million dollars for us being shifted from the state tax, the state tax base to the county, just in, just in police officers alone.
Yes, sir.
It's just unfair, right? It's unfair.
Yes, sir.
Right?
We got to take care of people somehow, and, but not having, they're not being funded like they should be. They don't have the staffing they have, their staffing levels right now are what we seen back in the late eighties and early nineties.
I guarantee you.
So, yes, there is a huge burden out there, and unfortunately, it does get shifted our way.
But I just wanted to make us.
That's kind of why we ask for consideration. I, you know, I understand that you all have to look at and the things we have to consider, the planning down the road. We're hoping that you can look at this and see where down the road we can make it work.
And people have to understand, this is getting a little bit off topic, but it is not too far off topic, is our public safety demands or issues easily equates to about eight million dollars between you guys at the sheriff's office and the volunteers from the fireside can't do thirteen hundred calls a year when the volunteers were started. They've only done three hundred calls a year and had three times the people. You know what I mean? So, so this is why it's so important for us to be able to look out in the future, to be able to meet these public safety demands. It's not anything that we're doing, we're very cost of our money, more so than anybody else has ever set up here. We're doing more with less, but there's, but the demand for some of the stuff is being shifted from the state to the counties.
Yes, sir, it is.
Well, and I think it's going to continue that way until there's actually somebody from this county that continually goes to Charleston and argues the position. I mean, I mean, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure if you cut twenty positions for the state police and we're paying a hundred thousand dollars a position with Carr and everything, or over a hundred thousand dollars is done. Take a rocket scientist to figure that's two million dollars they're saving and we have to take the burden. But until, until we show up in those conversations in Charleston and argue those points that are being overlooked on a regular basis, it's going to continue to go that way.
All right, so we'll take that under consideration, we'll move on in the next couple of weeks.
I appreciate that, and on behalf of the sheriff, we do, we appreciate your consideration and we know that there's a lot to be looked at. And all we can ask is that you take a look at it and see if it's feasible and it's possible. What we want to do here today is just make a presentation that you can understand and that we can show you the need, the justification we're asking for, so we appreciate that.
And chief, not your fault, but just want you to recognize, well, I was ten minutes early before you got here, now I'm thirty minutes behind.
You get the credit for being early and I get the credit for you being late?
Yes, I'm thirty minutes behind now.
You've been listening to Mr. Davis.
You've got broad shoulders, you can be the last player.
I used to get the eagle, I haven't heard that about bald heads. But I do thank everybody for their time, I appreciate your consideration and the rest, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is Allen Davis County Administrator, discussion regarding 110, 126 West King Street property and Board of Assessment Appeals hearings to be scheduled.
Several weeks ago, we discussed briefly 110, 126, which are two properties that currently are not occupied. We have not declared those properties surplus yet. You wanted some time. You indicated then that you wanted a little bit of time to think about it and asked me to put it back on the agenda for the first meeting in September, if I were here. Don't know if you want to discuss it now or you want to take it again.
I don't have any problems with selling 110. I've told you, my vision hasn't came to me on this. I'd hate to think about that we would lose parking for the courthouse. And so if I was to pull the trigger today, I'd say 110's okay to, I think now's the golden time to do that, to sell that. But I would even want to consider 126 to keep this park. How about, what do you all feel?
Well, 110 is a building that's in dire repair.
No, 110 is in pretty good shape.
Let's give it 126.
110's double registered.
Okay, but 126 is the one in bad shape, as far as inside. And, but again, if you tore it down, you wouldn't have that many parking spaces that are from that property, so.
There's a lot of interest right now in 110.
Yeah, I can imagine.
And the question that we've gotten recently is if they buy 110, do they have to pay 126, is it going to be sold as a?
Why don't we, why don't we, could we do it this way? Could we do 110 and 126 and make 126 optional? Whether we would accept it or not, I'm sure we could. Because there is a couple of things that we could check into. I don't know, I'm sure BB and T's still using that parking lot beside it too. But.
Well, they own it.
BB and T owns it.
I know they own it, I'm just saying, I'm sure they're still using it too. That's my only.
I mean, you have to go through the process of declaring it a surplus.
Plus you have to subsidize it too.
And then you'll have to give me direction, but I didn't want to do, I didn't want to do the declaration surplus property, so I will assert that as a direction.
How about, how about the council gives you direction to move forward, but I don't think it would be legal for us to make a decision before we even, a hundred percent. But, yeah.
I'll put it back on the agenda for next week to declare those properties surplus.
But 126 being an option.
Okay.
Just because they're declared surplus doesn't mean we have to sell it.
And why do you not want to get rid of 126?
Because I would think about tearing that down and making a parking lot there.
And I think that, I mean, I see no value in that property. I mean, if it was questioned, if there was question about keeping it. I mean, couldn't the county even entertain to lease the building, tear the one building down and lease the other building? And that way you keep the parking lot and all that.
If that's an option, I'm not so sure we can lease buildings.
Well, you can, I mean, you could title it to the development authority and let the development authority lease it. Development authority can. I mean, there's, there is other options. I mean, I don't know, I guess that's a legal question. He's still waiting.
There are ways to get things done. I think you have to figure out what you want.
Next week.
How about, how about we do it this way? How about we give you direction to explore our options?
Okay.
Because that would be a way to do it.
Right, that sounds like.
And in that way, we still have a property on the.
I mean, this council puts a lot of thought in everything that we do. And, and for some reason, this, this has just, hasn't registered in my head how to deal with this.
So far, we've had a church that's interested in 110, we've had a nonprofit that's interested in 110. They just went through it last week. And then had some other, who had some other, one married. And now, and I'll dig it up, break some options. The next matter is your twenty twenty Board of Assessment Appeals hearing. As the council knows, West Virginia Code eleven dash three dash twenty-four B states that you shall meet as the Board of Assessment Appeals knows sooner than October first of the tax year. We have had six Board of Assessment Appeals applications submitted, one residential, five commercial. The, one of the commercials, P E Hydro Generation, we had before us last year. That will involve the state tax department. So we're trying to get, and I assume we still haven't heard back. For the past two weeks, we've been trying to get a date that the state tax department is available to come down and have not gotten anything back.
Well, in years past, the state tax department doesn't want to come here to do the here, right? They owe us that honor.
All right, agree.
Okay.
But we're working on it. H A F Real Estate may or may not be coming before the council, that's currently involved in litigation. So for previous taxes owed us, but we do know for sure that we have one residential and five commercial. Anthony and I and Penny have not, we think it will take five afternoons. Is there any, it will try to, or I'm sorry, two afternoons for all five properties. Is there any, and we'll try to do it on Thursday, on Thursday afternoon, is there any Thursday in October that wouldn't be available, that you know of right now?
I'd prefer to do it, if possible, on the second or Thursday of each month.
Okay. That's the other problem we're having.
Whatever works.
All right. So two Thursdays in October, five afternoons, maybe, that you could set as the Board of Assessment uses.
The last two items is, we are preparing for our two thousand twenty twenty-one snow season, winter. I met with Jack Lang down at the facilities department about two weeks ago. We have everything set up. We ordered an extra pallet of salt and grit in anticipation, not knowing what the supplier is going to look like this winter, knowing how difficult it is to get building materials and things like that. So the current snow removal contracts, we have two separate snow removal contracts. One is for 122 Waverly Court. If you'll recall, our contractor plows both the health department lot and the church's lot next door, and then we build them and then they promptly reimburse us. That contract is the, is in the first year, we just awarded that contract new last year. It's with Fitzer Chapel Pines. The contract has the option for two additional out years. The current contract expires September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one. We have been in contact with Fitzer Chapel Pines. They would like to extend their contract for and exercise their, their first out year at no additional costs. Two hundred dollars per pallet, eighty-five dollars per hour, pickup with plow if needed, so on and so forth. So we're recommending that in that contract is exercised a little bit more regularly than our second snow removal contract, so.
That wasn't used at all, actually.
It was used some with our contract for all of the other facilities, that's at the discretion of our facilities director. Typically, we, because we have, all of our piles are now re-piles. We don't use a contractor until we actually have to usually haul the snow away when it's piled up so deep. Because of the use of 122 Waverly Court, that's usually plowed a little bit more regularly and we actually put more salt down there. So we did use Fitzer Chapel Pines for snow removal and snow and ice removal last year. But it's, it's still with you and everyone seems to be having it in the south.
I entertain a motion to renew the snow removal for 122 Waverly Court with Central Chapel.
Tell me.
Second.
Motion that made second, any discussion? If not, on favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, motion carries, and the other one?
The other one is B and R Mowing and Landscaping has had our snow removal contract for all other facilities other than 122 Waverly Court. They've had it for two years, we did not use them last year at all. They would like to exercise the option to extend the contract for the second out year, which would make it a three-year contract. Their fees, the fees that are proposed is.
Wait a second, Mr. Davis, let me hand this over to Mr. Delia. Recuse myself for this one, I could. Because in years past, I've done work for them. Do what?
Wait while I get screwed.
You don't have to explain to everybody what I'm doing, all right, Jim?
Get your cripple cart there.
I'm getting it.
Don't forget to make the right turn when you go out.
I'm just going to jump right off.
Dan, if he blows on these nose, is that a problem?
Again, we did not use B and R Mowing and Landscaping last year. They have requested that we extend our contract for one additional year with a three percent increase in fees. We're recommending that we renew this contract for a number of reasons. If you'll recall, we put it out for bid in eighteen nineteen, and the first time it was out, we didn't receive no bids at all. Um, at the direction of the council, we did put it out a second time. Uh, B and R Mowing and Landscaping was the only bid that we received with the second solicitation. Uh, we did use them, uh, some in eighteen nineteen, they did a very, very good job for us, we did not use them in nineteen twenty. And again, it's only, we only use the contractor with snow accumulations that exceed eight inches, and when the facilities director consulting with the county administrator, the county president determines that assistance is required. We're recommending the renewal of the third out here.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We'll entertain a motion to, um, approve the, uh, snow removal extension. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Problem solved?
Yes, sir.
That all we have?
No, sir, we have opinions from the public. Yeah. Um, and we pass, Harold Shue proposed registration.
Okay. We'll get. You gonna push him back in? Wheel him back in? Absolutely. Afternoon, Darrell.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Uh, a week ago today, the, uh, our office received a federally routine request from the Secretary of State's office to review the data put into the statewide voter registration system to make certain we had voter histories correct uh, from the twenty twenty primary. We spent the next several days verifying that information, and as of Monday, we're able to determine that all of the statewide voter registration system data was correct, and histories put in correctly. As part of that process, though, uh, the voters registration office dug a little deeper, realized that the official certified results from the twenty twenty primary reflected a larger number of voters casting ballots than the, uh, voter histories, poll sheets, poll books, and ballot ballots those indicated, uh, indicating some sort of error. Uh, we spent the past forty-eight hours eluding that as thoroughly as we possibly can, and determined that a portion of the absentee ballots that were cast in the early voting period, or in the early absentee ballot period, uh, appeared to have been double counted on election night and made its way through the certification process. Turk Small immediately upon hearing that directed us to notify all the relevant individuals, which would include the Secretary of State's legal team, the elections team, the county's legal team, and Turk Small has requested that the Secretary of State lend their expertise, uh, to us to verify our findings, thoroughly investigate, secure all records, and take all necessary steps, so that, uh, as we work through and verify the, the new information, we can then move to have the certified results corrected. Uh, in a preliminary examination, it appeared to us that no results races changed whatsoever. Primary winners, still the primary winners, vote margins shifted slightly in on candidates, but didn't change, uh, the winners of elections. However, the number of votes that are involved are not insignificant, roughly eighteen hundred votes that were double counted. So Secretary of State's office has very kindly responded, uh, Turk Small's letter, which we sent to the electronic delay yesterday. Uh, they have agreed to move expeditiously, and they expect their investigators and their teams to be here within hours, certainly by tomorrow. As more information is available, we will keep you fully informed.
Okay.
On my way up today, I pushed the button, we sent the release in front of you out of the press, uh, to all of the candidates from the primary that we had uh, email addresses for, and to the chairman of the two major political parties here in town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we're just under public comment now. Okay. All right, anyone else from the public? State your name for the record, please.
Kenneth Mattson, my apologies to my entire, then to your paperwork, but I was hearing something, uh, with the sheriff's department, and how you have to go up to, and you have to go up to Charleston with hat in hand. I believe also as a council, you should hold our elected officials that are here, if you send to Charleston, with company or be with you. Whether that's the case when you go up or not, you get to hold them accountable too, it's not fair to you to go up there hat in hand as well. This is food for thought, that's why I wanted to bring you in.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Public comment? All right. Mr. Barnhart, if you do the honors?
Uh, I'd be glad to, Mr. President, and I move to, uh, reset.
All right, we are reset.
Uh, Darrell, I need to see you from, uh, Gary, I need to see you from.